Well, we do have a full agenda tonight, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting, and I'll call the meeting to order and request a roll.
Mr. Mewoffe?
Here.
Ms. Kalamowski?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Darrow is not here, but President McCallum.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the meeting minutes from our July 8 meeting, to review any, if there are any changes or corrections, I'd request a motion to approve the ordinance in that meeting. Mr. Bush?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bush. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mewoffe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalamowski?
Yes.
President McCallum.
Yes. Tonight's agenda, any additions or corrections?
No.
With none, seek a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So move.
Mr. Bush? Second by Ms. Kalamowski. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalamowski?
Yes.
Mr. Mewoffe?
Yes.
President McCallum.
Yes. Communications to the board, Superintendent Siders, Mr. Sorders.
Thank you, President McCallum, and Board of Education members, I'm going to be extremely brief because of the presentations we actually have for you this evening. I just want to commend our faculty, our staff, and most especially our students and our families on an outstanding, outstanding start to the 2019-2020 school year. It's been an incredible week-plus in the school district across pre-K through 12. Enrollment right now sits at 5,055. We have a few withdrawals that are still pending in the system. The good news is there's not a line of people waiting to still register. The queue is currently clear, pending people that continue to move to New Albany, but there's no one waiting to arrive on the doorstep tomorrow morning at our schools. But the students have been outstanding. It's fun to have that life back on campus and breathe it back into the school buildings. They've actually been very, very excited. We're doing extremely well. Staff had an incredible start for professional development and then preparing for to receive the students across their school campus. So I personally believe it's the best opening yet, so I think there's more to come, but this definitely is probably our best year yet.
Awesome. Love hearing it, thank you. We now have the update, please. I'm trying to be efficient.
I love it. My name is Missy. I'm a fourth grade ELA teacher in the intermediate building, and I'm that building rep for us. Thank you, Mr. Sorders, and the Board of Education. We only have three things here, but I can assure you that there was much more happening since the very beginning of this school year, and teachers are quite busy at this time. Mrs. Darrow, who is a fifth grade teacher, completed a class at Ashland University towards her gifted education certification. Sandy Reed took two courses this summer through National Geographic on the geo-inquiry process, and this is going to allow her to represent Nat Geo and teach colleagues how to use the science inquiry method in their classrooms. And we had Lisa Betts completed master's level work on educating the whole student, mindfulness, and socially emotional learning in the classroom. So I think you'll see much more coming, it's just that we're kind of busy getting our kids ready. So I look forward to having more the next time.
Thank you very much. I think this was, we talked about this at a conversation, Sandy's certification with Nat Geo, is there a little more you could tell us about that?
Dr. Hamilton, do you want to talk about it?
Well, she's been...
Surely have your microphone. Thank you. TV land cannot hear you.
I don't know how. So Sandy has been working on her certification for several years now, and she has been going to lots of conferences and doing a lot of online courses and this kind of thing, and it takes quite a bit to be, to become certified. But one of the things we're going to try to do is, we, you all approved a memorandum of understanding at our last board meeting to do the Nat Geo inquiry process with, with our teachers in grades one through nine, and so she's going to be able to be the instructor and work with us on that. And so it's really exciting with what she's doing, and she, she works really hard and has done a great job with us.
Thanks. Other discussion items tonight, any more liaison reports? With none, that brings us to the big, the big show tonight.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Jessica Momias to talk publicly about the 2018-19 Local Report Card preliminary results and what to expect in the next few weeks from the Ohio Department of Education. So Dr. Momias is going to walk you through on the local report card accountability system and try to explain it in layman's terms so that everyone can understand what the department tries to translate. Dr. Momias.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me share these preliminary results. Today I will provide you with the preliminary results of the local report card. The local report card is one measure used amongst many from the district to determine if we are meeting our academic goals. The local report card has an accountability model that highlights academic attendance, graduation, growth, and college readiness. It is intended to help districts measure overall achievement and progress towards meeting and exceeding state standards. The academic measures rely heavily upon the results of the Ohio State tests. The Ohio State tests are only administered to students in grades three through eight and in selected high school courses. Although significant legislation surrounds requirements of achievement testing, it still only remains one source of data that is used by our staff in identifying and analyzing the strengths and areas improvement for every child. Today's presentation will be based upon preliminary results of official report card data where we released in September. The local report card is made up of five components. Achievement, how students perform on the state assessments compared to a state standard. You'll see that these are our preliminary results on the screen now. Gap closing, how are, there are 10 federally mandated subgroups that we need to report upon, and how our subgroups did on the Ohio State tests, and there are, we'll explain the English learners later on. Progress, which is not rated, that should come out roughly the same week as the report card, so we don't have a rating for that. But progress is the student growth compared to students' previous assessments, and did they stay within their cohort. Graduation rate looks at the four to five-year graduation percentage. And lastly, prepared for success, looks at different assessments such as college credit plus participation, AP participation, IB, ACT college readiness. So it looks at other assessments and kind of puts them all into the prepared for success measure. Achievement. Achievement is the big one on the report card. It's the one that's always on the newspapers, and it's the one that we use for Benchmark One. Achievement is broken into two components, indicators met and performance index. Indicators met compares the district scores to a standard that the state has set. For the academic tests, this is an 80 percent. At this point, we've earned 21 out of 24 indicators. There's one still outstanding and one, the gifted one, and that would be released in September. And the performance index is based on the test results of every student. And you will see that we increased our PI again from 105.6 to 106 for the 18-19 school year. So now I'm going to look at the indicators met of the 20, go through the 24, and it's primarily broken down by building, but it's broken down mostly by the tests. So for this third grade math and third grade ELA, the ongoing efforts of the primary staff to implement Bridges Math during the second year led to the highest pass rate and surpassed the 90 percent mark for the first time. In addition, over 50 percent of our third grade students scored at the highest level, the advanced level, on the state assessment. For the third straight year, 100 percent of our third graders met the third grade reading guarantee. And keep in mind, every year the state increases that benchmark for that students to pass the third grade reading guarantee. So while the state keeps upping that benchmark, we keep exceeding it in 100 percent three years in a row. The units of study provided students with additional opportunities to focus on growth. With the writing focus, the number of students scoring zero, so third graders have one essay out of 10 points, we had 13 percent of our students in 2018 score zero. With that focus, units of study, that dropped to 3 percent in 2019. And our percent of students performing in the highest level of writing increased from 25 to 52 percent. So targeted instruction within the ELA can definitely be seen in a third grade passage. For grades four through six, a focus area for the intermediate for the 18-19 was also the use of study and ready with the goal of increasing student scores on the essay portion of the Ohio ELA tests in grades three, six. In fourth grade, students scoring at least six, so they only have one essay, 10 points, increased from 45 to 54 percent. So again, we're pushing those students into that highest level for the state. Students scoring zero to one, so again, those, those students that scored zero or one point, we're decreasing that from six to two percent. Six to two percent. In fifth grade, students scoring at least seven points increased from 19 to 26. In addition, 49 percent of our fifth graders scored advanced in the ELA. So not just the writing portion, but overall, 49 percent scored in the highest level. In sixth grade, students scoring 13 points. So in sixth grade, it's the first time students have to write two essays on the state test. We increased our number of students scoring what's considered above proficient from 22 to 46 percent. So the targeted instruction reading led to positive results in the writing section of the ELA assessment across the board. Sixth grade ELA, while it did not meet the 80 percent indicator, when we look at every student, there were 20 students that only missed with two raw points. So it's this idea of capturing and targeting our students and identifying those and helping to move forward. Our new educational assistance within the intermediate are being used to help with some of those targeted instructions. For 2018-19, it was the second year of implementation of Bridges at the intermediate. We're looking at on-grade level students, so removing our accelerated students. So a fourth grader in fifth grade math, we're just looking at fifth graders taking fifth grade math. We had increased our overall passage by 9 percent, up to 86 percent. So when we remove, well, you look at the fifth grade math here, it is 87.7, so that includes our accelerated students. If we pull those out and look at just grade level, we're still doing really, really well with just our on-grade level students. Same thing with sixth graders, just on, on grade level sixth graders stayed the same, but there was an increase in the number of students scoring in the advanced level. For the third year in a row, there was an increase in passage of seventh and eighth grade ELA. 45 percent of seventh grade ELA students scored in the highest or the advanced performance level. While seventh grade math did not meet the 80 percent indicator, it continues to be a focus for the middle school. Eighth grade math students, 35 percent of eighth grade math students scored in the advanced level, and we've dropped the number of students in limited by 16 percent. In 2018-19 was the first year of the realignment of a science curriculum for middle school students. In 2017-18, only accelerated students took the eighth grade science test. In 18-19, accelerating seventh grade students along with eighth grade students took the eighth grade science test. While the passage decreased for eighth grade science students, a passage over 90 percent is a great indicator that realignment of the science curriculum was a positive move. The seven end-of-course exams represents all students in role in the respective classes. So if you look at Algebra I, last year we had sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade students taking Algebra I. So these percentages represent all of those students. For the first time in reporting of the EOCs, the end-of-course exams, all seven end-of-course exams met the 80 percent passage benchmark. Six of the seven end-of-course exams had an increase in passage from 17-18. The largest one-year increase in passage due from ELA II, and there was a 9.3 percent increase from 17-18 to 18-19, and 17.2 percent over two years. In addition, over 36 percent of ELA II students scored in the advanced performance level. There are two non-academic indicators that are reported on the report card. Chronic absenteeism measures the percent of students that missed 10 percent or more of school in a given school year. There's a strong correlation between student attendance and success in the classroom. Therefore, the state has added this indicator to hold schools accountable for helping students attend school. New Albany partners with the Juvenile Courts and provides a district with an onsite prudency officer that helps students and families set goals for attendance. This partnership has helped kept, helped keep our chronic absenteeism well below the state benchmark of 12 percent, 12 percent of students being chronically absent. In addition, the other non-academic indicator is the end-of-course retake, kind of, and of course retake, so students are allowed to retake an end-of-course assessment, and it looks at how many of the students that retook a test, how many increased their overall score. The state indicator was a 25 percent in order for us to meet this, and you can see that we well exceeded it, with 58 percent of our students that retook a test actually increased their overall score. And the last indicator is for gifted students, and the gifted indicator is broken up into three parts. Value-added or the progress component, this measures whether the student does its early expected growth on state assessments based on past testing history. And again, the value added measure has not been released and will come out in September. So this indicator is marked as not met currently because we don't have our value added. The performance index, this is a measure, the same as the district or the building, it takes the percent of students at each performance band and multiplies it by weight and adds the score. We currently are at 119.923, and the benchmark for this was 117. So we've well exceeded the PI for gifted students. And lastly, is inputs, looks at the, at students that are identified and whether we are serving students in the identified area. This continues to be a strong area. The benchmark is 82, and we're at 80 minimum points. And the last part for performance index is, or last part of achievement is the performance index. The primary component of achievement is this performance index. This is what's used for the rankings of the state. The state takes the percent of students scored in each specific performance level, levels, and multiplies by a specific weight and then adds up the points. The max number of points is 120. The state considers any score above proficient to be passing. For the third consecutive year, the overall passage has increased. So in 16-17, we had an overall passage of 83 percent, in 17-18, an 87 percent, and during the 18-19 school year, 88 percent overall passage. During the 18-19 school year, there was an additional 200 tests that were administered, so we increased the number of assessments, we increased our number of, of our overall passage, and we increased our PI. The district has made an 8.2 point increase in performance index since 2015-2016. This has been a concerted effort across the district. It is a two-pronged approach. First, there was a targeted intervention to decrease the number of students scoring basic and limited. So as I shared with you last year, if you look at these bottom two, and the graph is continuing to go down, so we're looking at those students. We continually decrease the number of students in the limited in the basic performance areas, and we're increasing the number of students in the top three, proficient, accelerated, and advanced. We've decreased our number of limited from 8.9 percent down to 3.9 in three years. We've decreased it by half. Second, so we help support those on the bottom, and then we are, we are very purposeful in our academic support to support students that are proficient and above, whether it be gifted support services, differentiation within the classroom, and project-based learning that allows for the individualized feedback to adjust instruction based upon the student needs. And as you can see, our rankings over the last three years, and again, our ranking will be released when the final report card is released in September. So for overall achievement, again, there's two parts made up of it, indicators, which is 25 percent of the overall achievement grade, and the performance index, which is 75 percent. So when you combine those two, in order to get our overall component grade, we have a component grade of a B for achievement. Gap closing. So the second component on the report card is gap closing, which looks at the 10 federally mandated subgroups in ELA in math. The state calculates a PI for each subgroup and compares it to a state standard. So the yellow bars are the state standards, and then the red is for the 17-18, and the blue is for the 18-19. So you can see our comparison within our subgroups from year to year and the state average PI. The state benchmark PI increases from year to year. So next year, those yellow bars will be even higher, so they keep increasing those PIs for each subgroup. As you can see from the graph, all nine subgroups exceeded the state expectation. While as a district, we met our subgroup goal, there are still specific subgroups that each building has identified to target support and intervention services. So gap closing for Ohio State tests looks at both the ELA and the math tests. So the second part of the gap closing is math, and as you can see across the state, the PI goals are lower for math. As a district, while as a district we met all the PI goals, we continue to provide opportunities for additional support to increase our academic achievement in math. The third component of gap closing is our graduation rate. You will see that we continue to be strong in our graduation rates for all students and for our subgroups. And the last component of the gap closing is for our English learners. So our English learners take what's called an Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment between February and March of every year. So there are two, two parts to this. We look at the overall number of students. So in that, we have 111 EL students in the 18-19 school year that counted for the district. Of those 111, 48 students scored proficient on the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment, which means they exited EL services. Of the remaining students, we look at, how did they do? Did they increase their score from 17-18 compared to 18-19? 41 of our students increased their OALSA score from 17-18 to 18-19 to give us an 80, 80.2 percent improvement. The state benchmark for this was 54 percent, and we well exceeded that improvement met. And so we earned our full points for gap closing for English learners across the district. This takes our overall component grade, all PI subgroups and ELA met their PI goals, met their PI goals in math. We met our graduation rate, and we earned all points for gap closing for English learners for an overall component grade of A for gap closing. The next component is graduation rate. This looks at a four and a five-year graduation, just based upon the way the state calculates graduation rate. No district will ever have 100 percent. And so we still remain very strong at 98 and 99 percent, and with an overall component grade of A for graduation rate. K-3 literacy is not rated. We have less than 5 percent of our kindergarten population that is considered a struggling reader, so therefore, K-3 literacy is not graded four at the district level. And the last component is prepared for success. This measure specifically looks at 2017 and 2018 graduating classes. The component is made up of two parts. Overall number of students scoring remediation free scores on ACT or SAT, and students that earned an honors diploma or industry credential. And then of those students that met one of the above, did they earn a three on an AP exam or earn at least a three college credits before graduating? These numbers are then compared to the overall number of graduating students for a percent, and New Albany has stayed around 86 percent for the last three years for a component grade of a B. So, looking forward to 1920, there are some, three highlights that I'd like to just remind you of. Third consecutive year of increasing our PI. We met our PI goal for all subgroups for gap closing, and really exciting that 100 percent of our third graders for a third year in a row were promoted to the fourth grade. Areas of focus, we continue to align our daily instruction with standards. We continue to do the curriculum audits pre-K through 12. We look at a multi-tier system of supports to targeted interventions to help all students. So really identifying those bubble students and how can we help support them to be proficient, provide opportunities to extend and improve learning, and again, one of my favorites, Performance Matters, and understanding how to use that data warehouse integration and usage throughout the district. So now we'll look at the individual schools and just do a highlight, just an overview of each of the buildings. The primary school had the highest PI, had its highest PI of 108.3, and had met all three of its indicators with an, with a component grade of A. Gifted, the primary school does not have value added, so we can say that they met their gifted indicator with a PI of 119, and they met their inputs with 81. Gap closing, all students, all subgroups met their PI goal within the primary school. Improving average K-3 readers, this component primarily measures how many below grade readers are reading at grade level at the beginning of the school year, where most others assess at the end. And so this one becomes extremely difficult to move out of that, just the way it's calculated, and so we've maintained a B for the last several years at the primary school. And again, third grade reading guarantee, third year in a row that students, 100 percent of our students were promoted. At the intermediate, the PI was a 106.6. Indicators met nine out of 10. They're gifted, we can't say whether they met or not met because they will receive value added, and that hasn't been released. But their PI was a 121.7, their inputs was 89. And so we can say they're on their way to meeting it, we just have to wait for value added. And gap closing, all subgroups for math and ELA met their PI goal. Some areas of focus for preschools through sixth grade, ongoing Bridges Math support, new implementation in preschool, so there's that vertical alignment piece. There's continued implementation of college curriculum math at the intermediate, ongoing units of study in the writing, analyzing last year's results, action plans, again, looking in that guaranteed viable curriculum, formative substantive assessments, and again, looking at that data warehouse to build a full academic picture of our students. We look at the middle school and high schools. The achievement, PI for the middle school was a 106.9. They met nine of their 10 indicators. They're gifted, again, it's not rated because we're rating on value added, but they met their gifted PI, and they met their gifted inputs. All subgroups met the OST PI for the performance index, but that English learner, English learners did not. So the third part is English learners for the middle school. This was the first year that the middle school had enough students to be reported. So the state of Ohio, the N size, you have to have 20 students in order for it to be reported on the report card. So last year, 17-18, they needed 25, this year they needed 20. So the middle school had exactly 20 students that met the qualification for English learners, and we needed to report their scores on the Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment. Of the 23 students met proficiency, so they exited EL services, seven met their growth goal. This put the school net at 50 percent. The state goal was 54 percent. Even though the middle school showed overall net percent growth, this was not included on the 17-18 because they didn't have enough students, and the state does not allow for partial points. So this can only be an all or nothing. So they either earn all of their points for English learners, or they learn no points for their English learners. Therefore, the middle school earned 200, they earned the full 100 for ELA, they earned the full 100 for math, and they earned zero for English learners. And when you add a percent, it gives us a component grade of D. And when you add a percent, it gives us a component grade of D. Just the way the state calculates it.
We have healed and lost.
We want to do that to our students.
One year's worth of data, not two.
So the high school, the PI was a one oh two point one, it was an increase of one point eight points and they met seven out of their ten. They're gifted, they're gifted will not be not met. Reason being is their gifted PI was a one sixteen point six one eight, we needed it to be a one seventeen. The gifted PI in the high school has increased over three points in the last two years. So while we didn't meet it, we didn't hit that one seventeen, that gifted PI has gone up the last three years at the high school. So it is definitely trending in the right direction. When you look at their inputs, they did meet their inputs at ninety-three. All subgroups met their ELA PI goals. On the Ohio State tests, all but one subgroup in math met their PI goal for gap closing for an overall component grade of A. Their graduation rate is still an A and they're prepared for success, the same as the district because it comes from Ohio State, isn't it? When we look at areas of focus for grade seven through twelve, we continue to implement CPM, College Preparatory Maths for grade six through twelve. We have targeted math and ELA intervention during additional lab time added to student schedules. Utilization of Eagle period study centers to provide additional support for individual students. Action plans specific to grades, again, we talk about the guaranteed viable curriculum, looking at formative and substantive assessments and building a full academic picture using our data warehouse. When you look at our goals, really when we look at the preliminary, low board report card results, benchmark one, increased achievement, we have increased our overall PI from a one oh five point six to a one oh six. We don't know our ranking, but we are definitely trending in the right direction. Benchmark three, meet or exceed the state's achievement gap closing standards for identified subgroups are to gap closing component grade of D or better. At this point, we have a component grade of A, so we could definitely say that we have met benchmark three. Questions, comments, if there's a whole lot of information.
For high school, you said we, the PI benchmark was one seventeen. You said we're trending in the right direction, what was ours last year?
For the high school?
For gifted.
For gifted, was it one, one fourteen point nine, somewhere around?
So it's gone up?
Yep. Is there anything you want to add, Michael?
Yes, thank you, thank you. How did you know? This preliminary won't be final till September, but I think it's important to focus on and we don't know what the ranking's going to be for the school district. It's a question I get most often because everybody wants to know what's the ranking, what's the ranking, what's the ranking? The reality is regardless of that ranking score that's released in September, this is the third and second of year that academic achievement has been proven to increase across the school district. As well as the third year for us, in this case, for two thousand eighteen, seventeen eighteen data, to look at meeting the subgroup data goal for performance index as well, which shows that growth is occurring across the school district. So we anticipate the value added data that will come in September will also demonstrate improvement across the school district. But it's very, very important to understand that regardless of the number, because that's what everybody asks me about, we can definitively say academic achievement has increased across the school district. The but answer is I don't know what else happened in all the other school districts in Ohio because that's what determines that outcome for the ranking that's issued for benchmark number one. So it is a celebration, our staff and our students did an outstanding job. We're very proud of them, particularly when you go back to initial information we just talked about, the PI. There were over two hundred more assessments that were administered. More students scored at the accelerated and advanced levels in the school district. The subgroup data is extremely positive. So it is a celebration regardless of the ranking number. And I don't know that because again, it's the rest of Ohio and we don't get access to that until September. But there's a lot to be celebrated amongst the faculty, staff and students. Our parents, obviously as partners in the education process, we're very, very proud of what the results show because it's forward progress in the right direction for the third year. And that's not easy. And I've shared with you before, the higher we climb, the harder it gets. We're up against the best of the best now in the state of Ohio and our kids still demonstrated they can, will achieve as we expect them to. So it is a celebration.
So just on the total number of tests, six thousand four hundred and sixty-eight. So did we drop a lot of students this?
No, that's, that's every student taking a test. So you have to remember that's only in grades three through twelve.
Okay.
So that does not include preschool, first grade or second grade or kindergarten. So it's just grades three through twelve and it's limited ELA and math in third grade until you get to the end of course assessments that then happen across the board at the high school. And not every high school student is enrolled and every one of those courses becomes summer grade level specific. Algebra is grade level specific, geometry is grade level specific, ELA one, ELA two. So it just depends on what grade you're in, but that's the actual number of assessments. It's over two hundred more than were administered last year based upon student enrollment. Because you remember, some bubble classes move through, so the number's going to be different year over year based upon the new class moving in. So Donna just sent a very large class, Mrs. LeBeau, from eighth grade to ninth grade. That's how enrollment now exceeds over sixteen hundred at the high school is because the eighth grade class is now at the high school from last year. Very large class.
You mentioned, just for clarification, you mentioned that there, there were some, in some cases you had, we had sixth graders taking eighth grade math.
Yep.
Are those students included in those numbers?
Yes.
Okay. Do we know, and not that really matters because we're New Albany and everybody else can do it the way they do it, but are, do other districts do that as well or do they just have only their A in greater state?
No, there's, so within the performance index, you actually get a bump. It's called a gifted bump. So a student taking a test above grade level, they, if they score advanced, they get actually an advanced plus, a small amount of PI. Across the board, when you see math acceleration at any time, whether it be this district or another district, you will always see those students. When you look at the report cards on the ODE website, it'll include every student that took it, whether they were on grade level or they were accelerated.
So having, having students taking accelerated exams actually helps boost the score. And just again, another point of clarification, I know the overall grade rate not the B.
I don't know what overall grade might achieve in grade.
Preliminary.
Preliminary. For parents of home that aren't, that aren't paying a lot of attention, everybody thinks that we should always have an A. A B is actually a pretty darn good score.
Yeah, we, when you look at our scores last year, we added the year achievement. It's our growth, our value added, our progress component that was an A, that pulled us up to an overall of an A. So not only were we at high achieving, but we're also high growth. So that growth actually pulled our overall report card grade up to an A.
So what, what would you, how do you explain to somebody who says, well, wait a minute, last year we, our performance index was this and we had it and we got the overall A. This year, our performance index has gone up, we may be a B. How does that mesh?
Well, I'd have to break it down because our overall component achievement grade was a B last year. So just that clarification piece, that the overall report card grade looks at achievement, progress, gap closing, prepared for success, combined to all of those for an overall grade. That B for achievement this year, we actually went up, our PI went up, our number indicators went up. So we're a higher B, a higher percentage when you actually look at the calculation. So again, I would say we have to wait till value added comes out in order to look at that overall.
But the higher B in achievement also reflects over two hundred more assessments administered, more students scoring at advanced and accelerated levels than the previous year. And we believe higher growth levels that will be demonstrated when value added growth comes out for progress purposes in September. That's what we believe about progress based upon all the work we can do. But until they release it, we don't know for sure. But we do know definitively, this is the third year in a row, in a row that academic achievement through the rating of performance index has increased. We're at one oh six currently. People are working hard. Very hard. President's back.
Four hours last night.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Remine.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to shift gears, I think this is a much lighter topic, I hope, I hope. Naming rights and advertisement rights and planning for the future. So based upon work that Ms. Jenkins and I have been doing in relationship to trying to look at future opportunities for the school district for capital repair and replacement beyond the generosity of our community through issue forty-two and how we're actually using dollars within the school district through general revenue fund and permanent improvement purposes. We're trying to come back and circle to previous conversations we had with the Board of Education and look at it from just a little bit different angle to get input, feedback and direction from the board before we continue in our planning process. So to do that, I'm going to reflect from past to present and give you a little bit of background on advertising agreements that have existed within our school district because I don't know that we candidly openly talk about these all the time. They've existed for many, many years, but I don't think we actually just talk about it publicly. Recall what happened with Veterans Field specifically. Provides you a couple other exemplars of athletic capital assets specifically related to the school district or others and then give you some examples of the research that's been done with the school district and potentially looking to expand advertising agreements for the future in a different way. So I'm going to start first with the advertising agreements. They date back to at least two thousand and two in the records that I've seen since I've come to the school district. Most of them are through a third-party contract that the administration's entered into on behalf of the Board of Education with Side Effects. Side Effects is a national company that actually works with local school districts, dominantly in a pre-K through twelve marketplace with some presence within higher ed, to actually go out and solicit contractual ads on behalf of the entity in a sales marketing campaigns. They have a dominant marketing, sales team that goes out to local businesses to try to sell ad space on scoreboards, scoring tables, field signage, et cetera, all within the guidelines that are dictated or governed by the Ohio High School Athletic Association and our requirements within Ohio. It's generally a three to ten-year term that they're selling on behalf of the entity called the school district. They places an ad somewhere on a scoreboard, a scoring table or a field signage. And the price of that ad varies from neighborhood of fifteen hundred dollars all the way up to ten thousand dollars depending on the length and term of that actual ad and its physical location. So a ad that's sold for the stadium scoreboard does not have the same proximal value to the vendor as an ad per se sold at the baseball field because three thousand people coming to an athletic event in the stadium is not the same as three hundred people coming to the baseball game. So the actual visibility of what actually is sold actually dictates part of the pricing model that's used. The current arrangement within the school district is dominantly a fifty-fifty split. Fifty percent to side effects for selling the ad and fifty percent back to the school district for placement of that ad within that term. Most of the vendors are entered into payment plans. Side effects will front the money on behalf of the vendor if they so choose in the contractual arrangement. So we get a hundred percent upfront of the fifty percent that we're supposed to receive or they can do a payment plan through the school district depending on what the vendor is. Back in two thousand, and I know this is small, but I actually found this in board records and we had to do some digging to find it and I know it's not very fine, so I apologize. So I'm going to tell you what it is. This is actually from Board Minutes from two thousand and twelve showing a motion that was carried four to oh by the then Board of Education, Laura Kohler, Michael Klein, Natalie Matt and Mark Ryan, were the seated Board of Education members that took public action to enter into agreement to endorse approval of a donation from the Athletic Boosters at that time. So in two thousand and twelve, they entered into agreement through board action to accept the donation from the Athletic Boosters to fund a privately funded athletic field turf at New Albany High School for Eagle Stadium. In addition to the money that was generated to actually pay for the privately funded turf that was installed at the stadium, the intent at that time was to also accept donation for fifteen thousand dollars per year from the then Athletic Boosters towards the future funding of the replacement of the athletic turf. In exchange for doing that, the Board of Education deemed by proclamation of board action that they would name the field Veterans Field. So that all happened in the same action item from the Board of Education in two thousand and twelve. The last stipulation was that in addition to that, because there would be additional costs associated to future replacement of the field, that twenty thousand dollars annually would be invested by the Board of Education from general revenue funds or other funding provided by the school district to actually offset the additional fifteen thousand provided by the Boosters to pay for a future replacement of a turf field. Turf field neighborhood is five hundred thousand dollars once it's been installed for replacement purposes. And the average lifeline of a turf field, the warranty typically is eight years by the manufacturer. You can typically, through proper maintenance, get ten to twelve years of use. Most fields never make it past the twelfth year. And that's what, at the most maintenance you can possibly provide, ten years, they will start giving the warning signs that you better have a replacement plan. In our case, we're estimating two thousand and twenty-two or after in the summer for replacement. Again, it's a half a million dollar expenditure that would be required by the school district. The good news is to date, through board action, including some of your own, we've set aside three hundred and eighty thousand dollars into the account for turf replacement. And then the former Athletic Boosters no longer exist. So we are not receiving any fifteen thousand dollar donations from that Athletic Booster Club because they do not exist within our school district. So the remaining money that actually exists from them sits at the New Albany Community Foundation from the original capital campaign that they did for private funding with the foundation when they first put in the field. It's about a ninety thousand dollar balance sitting at the foundation that would then come to the school district through drawdown by Becky, through the foundation when and if we actually have to replace the field. So currently, we have about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars set aside for future field replacement at the high school. So you know, as part of our district responsibilities that you charge us with and the community expects is that we maximize the capital assets on our school, on and across our school campus while protecting the safety and welfare of students, staff and the community alike. Additionally, we set annual goals to maximize our financial resources via through the general revenue fund or through the PI funds that exist in our school district. We actually go through a competitive bid process for all procurement greater than fifty thousand dollars pursuant to Ohio revised code. And we seek alternative revenue sources when appropriate and available. So most recently, you know, we received some grant funding for offset amount of health specialists within the school district through Adam H. And then last week, and I haven't sent this to you yet because we're going through the fine grant, we received a forty thousand dollar grant from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation towards specific uses that were permissible through the grant. So we're actually working through that. So we do seek grant resources when appropriate and available to the school district. So previously through board charge, we had done some research related to quote unquote naming rights. And I'm going to shift the conversation tonight from naming rights to a little bit different lens to challenge our thinking. But I'm going to basically help you recall what we've done. So in the private sector, be it in public education, private education, non-curricular, non-public chartered or private corporations, the previous Board of Education and then again you had asked the administration to specifically do research, which we shared with you, about other entities that use naming rights for endowments, chairs, gifted societies, pledging, advertisement purposes, estate gifts, the restricted gifts, scholarships and more. And these were some of the entities, be it from private schools like Andrew Osborne or St. Charles or Columbus School for Girls of the Wellington, Frank St. Francis de Sales. Or from a university perspective, we looked at Ohio State's rules, we had looked at Columbus State or Cleveland State's rules. And then while we're in the Cleveland world, we reached out just to see what the orchestra did as an example versus what the Cleveland Clinic Foundation had specifically done in the healthcare world. And as you can imagine, there's a wide variety of things that happen related to gifting and their requirements within each of those organizations. While we're in the marketplace, we then went back to the K through twelve world and tried to discover what else had happened really in school districts. And these are some of the examples that we could specifically find related to naming rights. A stage, and from what I read about the stage, it was a local community member who had a passion for the arts that decided in Oak Hills, Ohio to donate twenty-five thousand dollars to the school district in exchange for his name being put on that specific stage for all performance purposes. And a library was dedicated in Brookline. performance purposes. And a library was dedicated in Brookline, New Jersey, and some of the research that we had done for $100,000, and it was to put a plaque on the outside in memoriam to a former librarian. A kitchen was sold in Sheboygan, Wisconsin, and I put this on here because it's very unique as far as what it was used for, but it was a local chef that lived in the community that had a passion for food and said, "I'm gonna help this school and its elementary kids understand food," and he actually asked to purchase the kitchen in exchange for helping them in that partnership. And then lastly, it's an example of an optorium, and there's different things in Ohio, but I pulled one from Plymouth, Wisconsin, just to show you the scope that across the United States, there's different people doing different things related to this thing called naming rights, as you know. We've talked about this as a board and administration. You will recall that to do naming rights, we'd have to do board policy and administrative guidelines. The Board had charged back in January as part of the subcommittee work that would be done, that Mr. Newmoff and Mr. Bush would work with the administration, and we would have some conversations preliminarily about this. We have done that. Based upon that work, we have talked about options, and I'm gonna present one of those options tonight with a little bit different twist that's not called naming rights, because I'm interpreting it a little bit differently than we have in the past, and I'm looking for board reaction and feedback to that interpretation. So, where I wanna go is in the research associated to advertising agreements specifically, so not naming rights, done for perpetuity or a specific something like that. I wanna go down the path of kind of expanding upon our current work that we're doing in the school district related to advertisement, specifically on scoreboards or in the placement placards or other things that we do as a school district, and talk specifically in the world of stadiums, so in the athletic arena. Knowing that, if you think about it, and I just told you, there's $470,000 set aside for future replacement of this thing called turf on our athletic field. But let's set that aside for a second and pretend that $470,000 wasn't currently in the bank and ready to go. We would need a half a million dollars minimally for turf replacement within a 10-year term. We would need approximately a half a million dollars-ish, somewhere between 350 and 5, depending on the condition and deterioration of the thing called water, to replace a track in the stadium. So, when we did the last track last year, you know, we came in well over budget because of the water stream that was running to the wetlands. So, we had more work that had to happen on the track because of its deteriorated condition. But in a perfect world, we would spend no more than a half a million dollars to replace the entire track. And then you know, last spring, we actually did Board Resolution to adopt a contract for Deportronics to replace the original scoreboard in the stadium. It's a $250,000 asset. So, within that course of time, within a 10-year period, minimally, you can expect, you're gonna spend a half a million dollars on turf, half a million dollars on typically track, and $250,000 rough number just on a scoreboard. That's three major capital assets within the stadium. So, it's really 1.25 million dollars that you should expect within a 10-year term, which led Becky and I to conversations about, well, what else do we do besides the reliance on our taxpayers to continually look at the PI, which is an option, but to bring something else forward to the Board of Education for consideration. So, in our research, we found advertising agreements that have been recently executed in Ohio, specifically in North Royalton, where the advertisement rights for their stadium name were sold for $100,000 for a 10-year term. In North Olmsted, the stadium naming rights for advertisement purposes were sold for a 10-year term for $250,000. Lakewood, $320,000, and then Brunswick for $750,000. The annual payments received by the Board through a Board adopted approved vendor to offset athletic costs, capital expenditures, or other things that are deemed appropriate by that school district. So, there's no 750, I'm just gonna use that as the example. The $750,000 expectation in Brunswick, Brunswick did not receive an instant check for $750,000. They're receiving $75,000 for 10 years, which made it more manageable for advertisement budgets within a corporation or a vendor to say, "I can give you $75,000 a year for 10 years, and in exchange, these are the terms that I will agree to." Then it becomes a negotiations opportunity. That includes things related to Google searches, appearances, the video advertisements on scoreboards, infomercials at specific athletic events, commercials that are run by the school district on that entity's behalf, as an example. Were all parts of terms and conditions that it became another revenue source to the school district that did not rely on the taxpayer, it was done through advertisement. So, in our conversations, Becky and I went searching for Board Policy. So, is this permissible by Board Policy? And the answer is yes. Current Board Policy 9712 governs the use of schools for advertising purposes, which includes, and I'm just gonna paraphrase two things, the use of signs, slogans, posters, films, film strips, et cetera. I need to update that because film strips and that function are forbidden from school grounds and facilities unless it is a specific fundraising or other school project initiated by the school and for the benefit of the school or its students. And then continuing on to the third sentence, any sign, slogan, or commercial advertisement that is displayed on a permanent basis must be approved by the Board. So, all advertisement is governed by the administration and the Board of Education to basically say that if we would expand our advertisement efforts to think about a different way to fund future capital related to athletics, and in my example, I'm suggesting the stadium be our first opportunity, is it a different way to think about the future? So, knowing that we have fiscal fiduciary responsibility to our community, is our opportunity related to Eagle Stadium perhaps different? And should we start a conversation to talk about how we go about that? In speaking with Paul and with Mike, I shared that we had requested from Side Effects, so what's the, what do you get out of it? So, I know what you get for selling ads. Selling advertisement on a much grander scale, what does that mean? So, the current offer from Side Effects is it's a one-time flat $5,000 marketing fee to contract with the Board to seek an approved vendor for the Board to then take action upon to advertise and quote-unquote "sell" advertisement rights of Eagle Stadium, perhaps for a 10-year term, perhaps for a 15-year term, I don't know. We found examples for a five-year term. So, it would come down to what that person, or vendor, or business, or corporation was willing to negotiate with the school district, but there's a flat one-time fee of $5,000 to do that from Side Effects. The other conversation that we had was the district provides public notice, and then we actively seek a vendor on our own before we go out and spend the $5,000 to see if we can do it before we have to hire a marketing firm to go do it for us, because I did not go to school to be a marketing person. I went to school to be an educator. However, we can attempt to do it on our behalf as a school district. I'm not all about sales, but I can probably figure it out. With your help and assistance, we have to identify, I will tell you that's the one condition of Side Effects, is that we have to identify a minimum of 10 potential corporations or businesses that we would suggest that they would approach for potential advertisement, given the level that we would set. The dollar amount would be determined by the school district, which is something that we would have to work on. So, I showed you great variance of $100,000 to $750,000 just within four school districts in Ohio to understand what the value of advertising at Eagle Stadium would be, given its proximity to photo road, and what specifically would become available to them from a marketing standpoint for whatever corporation or business that we would choose to approach. So, tonight, before Becky and I continue our planning related to capital improvements, because we're trying to update some cost spreadsheets for the school district , even where we're now at in our roofing work across the school district, I'm asking the Board to take position or direction and offer your insight on advertising on larger scale. Are you in favor of it, or are you opposed to it, before we spend any more effort and energy in doing this? What your perspective is on hiring a third party to attempt to do it? In this case, the example I can give you is Side Effects. We have found two other advertisement marketing firms that would do it on our behalf, but I will tell you that their fee is a percentage of the total sale. It is not a flat fee as a one-time, and I gave examples of those to both Paul and to Mike. So, I know that they've been a little bit more involved in the conversations that we've had. So, we're looking for input, comment, and feedback. So, do you like the concept? Because it's a little bit different than where we've been going in our conversation, because I'm gonna call it advertisement. And a bigger man.
I like the idea of looking at it as advertising versus naming rights, because I think it gives us a lot more flexibility, and, you know, kind of once you've done naming rights, it doesn't generate any more revenue after that. And this, I feel like, you know, because it's more temporary, and even if it's 10 years, we can still regenerate it after that 10 years. So, I feel like it's a longer stream of revenue, and it doesn't lock us in, you know, forever to one name on a building. What does the, what does the company do when we give them the 10 names?
They actually make the call. They do, from a cold call to the actual onsite visitation, and they go through potential terms and conditions to see if the company or business would be interested in that level of advertisement, and then give specific exemplars from other schools that they've worked with on things that they could do as part of the negotiations of the contract. So, from Google searches and how you can get them to appear quicker, advertisements within our case would be through district advertisement, the infomercials at all district events if it's in the stadium. So, I mean, it's not just localized to football. It would be at every athletic contest in the fall and/or spring that would occur in that stadium. So, if there's an infomercial because it's a business, then that would show up at every single event as a term and condition, as an example, and two of the contracts that we've seen. So, Side Effects has some experience in actually trying to negotiate the terms and conditions of those contracts and things that they've successfully seen in partnering that entice that business from a marketability standpoint.
First of all, I would say that 90% of the things you do as superintendent, you did not go to school for. So, the fact that you didn't go to school for marketing is too bad. Get to do it anyway. In general, I much prefer the concept of advertising for the reasons that Debbie mentioned, and also, I never liked the idea of having public education be for sale and giving away names. I just, I don't like doing that in a, in public education. It's just not my thing. So, I love the idea that, you know, advertising for extracurriculars to help support it and help bring in a continuous revenue stream. I think that's, that I'm completely comfortable with. So, I much prefer that idea. In terms of you, us going out and doing it versus hiring a third party, it's, to me, it's a function of the return. You know, if a third party can get more money, then, you know, if we pay them $5,000 and they get us $10,000 more money, we're $5,000 to the better. So, I don't care. I mean, I, well, I do care. I'd rather spend the $5,000 to get 10, because that's a pretty good return on investment. If they don't, then I'd rather not spend the money if we think we can do it ourselves. But that's, that's how I look at that. It doesn't really matter if it's $5,000 or $50,000. What matters is, do they get us more money? And more than what we pay them. Because if they don't, then they're not worth it.
$5,000 seems reasonable to get their expertise and just all the benchmarking that they can give us in terms of negotiating these contracts, plus they can offer you.
We'll still participate. We just won't be
Yeah, driving.
As present, driving.
So, I'm curious, because if they are typically getting 50% of whatever they're selling.
That's on ad space. It's not on what they're naming. They're calling it advertising naming rights is how they qualify it. But this is new. I don't, and that's why I think it's ground floor. Honestly, I think that's why they're trying to do it. They're trying to change the direction and create a different opportunity. So, I think they're willing to accept less to start with, who I think will stay that way in the future now, because selling ad space didn't stay that way.
Yeah. Well, Paul and Mike, you guys have been closest to this. I'd be curious to hear your thoughts.
I would agree with Phil and Debbie. I like starting here. To answer the first question, I'm generally in favor of pursuing advertising naming rights, whatever you wanna call it. And I probably take a bar of view than Phil of what, longer term, given that we live here with the height in McCoy. I don't have a negative viewpoint of at some point, maybe this is a pilot project, exploring naming rights for some other facilities or libraries or cafeterias, or lots of playgrounds, you name it. I think there's a lot of generous corporate support in this community for lots of activities, and certainly the schools are another one of those activities. But, back to this point, I ask the same, I'm glad you asked that question, John, about it just seems too good to be true based upon their existing business model, which is to take 50%, and I understand, you know, how they're earning the 50%. I don't, you know, good for them. They can get it, we get half of it. But this, I mean, I would, I would wanna make sure we can name our price, because the easy thing to do is go out and sell it for $100,000, and maybe it's worth a million and a half. And if they wanna work under those conditions, you know, I'm happy to take their expertise and see if we can negotiate a deal. But otherwise, I would say you're an extremely talented marketer. Supported by Patrick hiding behind the pole over there. I can imagine the campaign we could put on to help generate activity. Yes, one more comment. I didn't know whether the $5,000 deal, whether they then get an exclusive on selling advertising rights at 50% for everything else within the stadium.
That's currently part of the negotiated contract that already exists. We cannot sell ad space to another vendor as long as the contract is in place with Side Effects.
And how long is that contract in place?
I'm gonna say it goes to 2026, I think was the extension that was approved by Richie, but I'll have to verify that. I think it's 26. Ken, do you know? I think it's 26.
I haven't seen, like, how much they're generating from that in terms of gross volume, but that feels, in this community, very rich compared to what I think we can generate with just word of mouth.
Sorry, we'll check. But just to be clear, the $5,000, that actually, that's all we give them, right?
Yes, this is a separate agreement. Becky and I have been through this agreement multiple times, because I agree with Paul. It seems almost too good to be true.
Right, right.
But we've looked at this agreement multiple times. Yes.
But they watch this tape, they're gonna think they should raise their.
Well, I don't think it's a safe $5,000 in the future anyway. I think it's because this is new. There's not companies out there doing this within a K through 12 environment, but when you look at the corporate impact on intercollegiate, collegiate, and really pro sports, there's a lot of stadiums that have some advertisement tied to it that they've sold the rights to. I don't know for how long, but I don't know what those contracts are, but there's now a market that has changed, that has become a K through 12 high school market dominantly for an athletic stadium. It's new. And I just don't think it's tested. That's part of our issue. But other communities have proven in Ohio, based upon the research that we've done with troopers and superintendents, that it's possible. And they did use Side Effects, and they paid a one-time flat fee. We have verified that.
Anything else?
No, I'm asleep. I'm definitely very, very supportive of it.
I'm supportive of your argument.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we have probably some very rich real estate here that, you know, people are gonna wanna put their name on, which I think is very exciting. I think it helps with, you know, I think this whole team up here, you, Michael, that we demonstrated that we're really working hard for every dollar to spend it wisely, and, you know, I hope the community appreciates that, and there's some generous people out there that would want to do that. I think we want to focus on the schools, right, the classroom, students, the staff. But I absolutely agree with you. I mean, Michael is, you know, he's a very talented guy. He can do a lot of good work out for us. But I think, you know, $5,000, if we're not, if we don't have to remain committed, because we have to give them the 10 names, we have to do some research on around there.
Now, there's homework on our part, but we'll go through that.
If we're not committed to sticking with them, I think it's a pretty smart investment for them to be, begin the life work.
One of the things that Becky and I would suggest is, because for me, the Board with Side Effects, we were gonna bring them in and give, go back to the original conversation of the Board with permission, that Mike and Paul would be invited to attend the meeting, given our prior work to date, and let you be in the room with Side Effects to have a conversation about the terms and conditions and what's possible within the contractual arrangement if we're gonna pursue their expertise. So, I think we should do a listening session to see what they tell us in person, but we have done homework on the school districts they've worked with, and we've been told the same thing from the districts today. Everybody good?
Yep.
Good.
Okay, we'll start it. So, if you know anybody that's in the market looking for advertisement, they should contact Becky, myself, or a board member. That's what I would invite the community to do. So, this is a new venture for us, but I think it can produce long-term results from a fiduciary standpoint to benefit our community in large.
And I'll just ask, now, the scope of this discussion is the
Right now, the pilot I'm suggesting is the stadium, specifically Eagle Stadium. It is not renaming Veterans Field. Veterans Field is Veterans Field. It is not renaming Veterans Field, Veterans Neil, it's Veterans Field required through board action. I'm suggesting the stadium, and there's some homework we're going to have to do, back to the point of Mike May, but I'll even put in the context of what's possible with photo road and the architectural review board requirements in New Albany, because signage has very explicit requirements, and I need to find out what's even possible before we go and try to have a conversation about what is possible, given the proximal facing of the stadium to photo road. So there's work we have to do, but before we continue, I don't want to invest any more time down this path that's not something the Board of Education is interested in doing.
Or what, or what you're asking, is this the only facility?
For now?
So for now, right?
If somebody takes Michael's question and says, "I mean, are student baseball, the only, it's not quite active."
I think we would be open to the dialogues. My suggested pilot is the stadium. If someone really wants a gymnasium or a baseball field, a softball field, come talk to me, we'll figure it out. But I was starting with the stadium, but if you have a smaller aspiration, I'll be happy to talk to you to benefit our kids in the long term, because that's what this is about. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, dude. I'll give Michael a second to get back here. We've got next, I have the board policy.
Good. It's not mine, but it's good.
So board policy is next. I presented these at the last Board of Education meeting. They're updates to the 2000 series that I promised you would be coming back. I've made no additional changes since you saw them. This is their second appearance, and they will move forward for board action.
Any questions on any of those? If not, let's move on to our first opportunity for public participation. We have none, so move on to treasures items. Could I have a motion, please? Mr. Darrow?
Second.
Calanowski? Stranger?
Thank you. We have June financials, and none of what I'm about to say is new to you, because we've talked about it throughout the year, but because June 30th is the end of our fiscal year, I wanted to do just kind of a high-level budget to actual summary. Looking back at the October forecast, where we ended in June, and so revenue realized a 3.8% increase over estimates due to real estate tax collection, income tax sharing payments, public utility, personal property tax collection, and tax incentive financing payments coming in higher than expected. The majority of the variance is due to a payment from City of New Albany for a one-time two-year pass due Turk payment of 1.1 million, as well as an arrears income tax sharing payment. Just to point out, our largest revenue, which is real estate, was within 1.5% of the original projection. Expenditures realized a negative 686, 735, or a negative 1.1% decrease over estimates, which we include, when we include the transfer of the 3.4 million from the general fund to the permanent improvement fund for needed capital repairs and maintenance per the five-year capital maintenance plan. Without the inclusion of the transfers, the district's expenditures were 4.9% under estimates. All expenditure categories ran under estimate with the exception of materials and supplies, which was offset by budget transfers from purchase services. The largest expenditures are personnel and benefits. While the district did exceed the estimate for new positions projected in the forecast, the savings from attrition replacement more than covered that overage. Personnel was under budget by 1.1 million dollars. A combination of attrition savings and retirement payments and lower-than-projected insurance premium increase resulted in being under the benefit budget. Purchased services were under budget due to tuition to other districts, autism scholarships, and utilities lower than expected. So overall, the ending cash balance realized an increase based on the discussion above of 3.6 million. The increased revenue and decreased expenditures effectively eliminated the negative spending projected in the October forecast.
Roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski? Yes. Mr. Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President.
Yes. Yes. Superintendents' items, A through D, may I have a motion, please?
Second.
Mr. Bush? Mr. Newmoff? Sorry.
Thank you, President McCullough. Board of Education members, letter A for personnel or standard employee action items that continue from the 2019, 2020 school year. Some hiring and a few resignations, as well as the approval of supplemental contracts to fill specific decisions in accordance with the terms and conditions of collective bargaining agreements. Letter B this evening, again, standard action items related to 2019, 2020. There's a statutory requirement that you have to adopt a board resolution specifying that we do not have career technical education courses that meet the qualification rules related to definition five, you'll have partnered education by September of each year. We have a field trip for approval, as well as a change in the maintenance contract. We finally have received, I believe, approval from the Architectural Review Board. However, the garage that we plan to do for maintenance purposes between the annex and the administrative offices is now required to have a water table to meet the aesthetic requirements of being placed on our school campus, given the current look of the expectation of what the campus holds. So that increased the budget that was required because of the approval process of the Architectural Review Board in New Albany. We have approval of a world exchange, foreign exchange student, he will be the fifth in the school district that's coming to us, as well as action items for the approval of credential evaluators and a nurse intern agreement. Letter C, as always, we think for, are thankful for the generosity of corporations and support, as we've talked about tonight, different athletic contests or teams across our school campus, this one specifically being for boys across. And then lastly, our board policies, they have been referenced too, for board adoption for revision purposes or rescinding based upon changes to state federal law.
Any questions? This one?
The increase in the cost of the garage, so the total contract amount is 1162, how much was the increase to the water table?
$16,000. Part of it was offset by the contingency, but we're off by about $1,800, so we have to increase the total amount.
We had originally done it not to exceed 160,000.
So the water table cost that was added was some $16,400 and some dollars.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Newmoff?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes, and with no one again for public participation, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll take Mr. Bush and then, was that Mr. Newmoff? Mr. Newmoff, he has to go to birthday dinner, so he gets to make his remarks.
Mr. Newmoff?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
President McCullough?
Yes. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is September 9th.